All right, good evening. My name is Brian Haggerty. I'm the board chair of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. I want to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting for this month. And there's a paragraph I'm supposed to read here. Let me get to the right page here. That if you would like to follow us on the Internet, you can go to www.youtube.com/user/goepcc. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And will you please take the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Uxer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Nahera.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Haggerty.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez and Ms. Peña are not here.
Ah.
Ms. Sanchez and Ms. Peña are not here yet.
Okay. All right, I'd like everyone to please stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. And I think we're going to go to approval of minutes. Can you read 1.4, Belle?
Item 1.4, Approval of Minutes. This includes the January 27, 2024 Special Board of Trustees Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting, our guests and staff members. 1.6, Belle, open forum?
No one.
No one? Okay. 1.7?
Item, Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Mr. Keith Erickson of the Northeast Rotary Club will make a presentation to the Board of Trustees regarding the Flags for Heroes at the Trans Mountain Campus.
Thank you so very much, and it's great to see everybody here again, and thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm with the Northeast El Paso Rotary Club. My name is Keith Erickson, and once again, we want to, first off, we want to thank you for making Flags for Heroes last year very successful at the Trans Mountain Campus. We're back here again to talk with you about this and discuss it because we would like to do this again, and we're going to need your permission to do this on a regular, on a yearly basis. And so, in case you're not familiar with Flags for Heroes, what we do is we plant flags, about 100 flags along Diana Drive between Kenworthy and Gateway North. And those flags, the people who sponsor those flags, they pay about $100 to have their hero's name displayed on that flag four times a year, and that is one of our biggest fundraisers. And our fundraisers actually, our biggest fundraiser we do is, you know, for every year, we have this, we donate about $40,000. Last year, we donated $40,000 to organizations such as El Paso's Fighting Hunger, EPCC, UTEP, goes on and on and on. And so, we just want to do this again because this is such a big fundraiser, and it allows us to give so much back to the community. We also have, that we also display as our appreciation, we also display a certificate for Flags for Heroes for El Paso Community College Trans Mountain Campus. And so, I would like to take a few moments to humbly present this to you. Again, you are our hero for allowing us to do this every year and to allow us to give back to the community. So, I don't know how I should do this, but I would like to present somebody from the board.
Well, you can bring it up to all of us here.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Absolutely. Thank you so very much, I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you very much again.
Thank you for all you do, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, hi, how are you?
Doing fabulous.
Thank you. Is Jimmy Milber part of the club?
Yes, he is.
How in the world did you manage to get up here and sit again?
Because he harassed me for two years. That's why.
He's out shaking somebody down.
Milber. Thank you, Judge Haggerty, appreciate that.
Counselor, do we need to put an agenda item next month? Let's say it, to vote on it or not, and to do that, or?
To do it what?
Well, he's asking you to make him do it again this year. Do I need to put it on the agenda next month?
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's on there? I didn't get to that. Okay, we'll vote on it tonight.
I appreciate you, thank you guys so very much, have a blessed evening.
We love what you do out there, of course, we love your donation every year.
Pardon me?
We love your donation every year.
Thank you so very much, appreciate you.
I kind of know the people in that club, I think we need to raise it. We need to raise your contribution a little bit.
Absolutely, appreciate you. Thanks so much, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1.7.2, Belle?
Item 1.7.2, Mr. René D. Peña, CPA Peña Briones McDaniel and Co. will present the audit results for the fiscal year 2023 financial statements.
Good afternoon, Board, appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to present the audit report. This is the audit report for August 31st. So, it is the completion of the 2023 audit, and we have a responsibility to present it to the Board. It's one of the government requirements. So, I'll try to be brief, but yet informative enough. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. So, the first one is, as I just said, we have a responsibility to present. We did have a meeting with the management team a couple of weeks ago and went over these in full detail, but now a general oversight for you, the Board. Want to go over, well, what is the audit? What's the auditor's responsibility? Well, we have a responsibility of testing, analyzing the college's internal control reporting on financial data. So, we basically look at control environment, your risk environment, the information communication, and monitor. We look at overview, basically, instead of looking at every number, we look at your control and your systems of control for the numbers and the reports that you have. The testing of the college of internal control includes performing information processing, performance reviews, physical controls, and segregation of duties. I'll run through these rather rapidly to get to the numbers in the back, but just to give you an overview of what it does entail. Also, the testing of the college's financial statements. We want to make sure that the numbers are materially correct, not absolute, but materially correct, that they follow proper governmental and accounting standards, and that you, again, have proper, you'll notice that word again, internal control, so that you, the Board, can be comfortable that the reports you get on a monthly or weekly basis are reasonably accurate. And then, we come in at the end of the period and say, yes, they were. And in your case, the answer is, yes, they were. Some of the significant issues that affected, I presume you're not CPAs, and therefore, I want to just point out, well, what should we be looking for? Well, some of the material changes I've talked to you about year after year are, have to do with pensions. And that pension can fluctuate your financial statement quite significantly. And so, I thought I'd capture it real quick. So, basically, the significant, your cash investments during the year, a couple of the important features that were affected this year were that cash investments increased by $41 million to $296 million this year. In 2022, you had $30 million that was received unrestricted, just that was in the previous year. Non-operating grant revenues did decrease by $66 million to $28 million decrease. In 2023, a total of $22 million was received, $7.8 million was reimbursement for the community college's COVID costs, and 14.3 as lost revenue costs. So, COVID really came in, I should say, the COVID revenue really came in like a gangbuster in '22 and started to fizzle out, but still very significant, in 2023. And then, again, as you can see, the last one, 2022, a total of $55 million was received, of which $29 million was passed through to the students, and $8 million was reimbursed for the college. So, a significant decrease, but yet a very significant amount of money, $55 in '22 and $22 million in '23. The next one, as I mentioned before, was the pension and the effect that the pension plan has on financial statement. The net pension liability, this is looking at your future pension cost increase by a total of $18 million this year to $33.1 million. This was mostly due to the fact that you had a increase in the discount rate, I'm sorry, a decrease, I'm sorry, in the discount rate of .25%. That's significant, jumping from 7.25% to 7% as a discount rate. That means you're looking to the future, and you're saying, no, I'm not quite going to make 7.25. Let's reduce it to a plan that over the next 10 years, I'll average about 7%. Well, that's what basically made up the $17 million additional expense included in your liability. But then, we come through with this accounting jargon of deferred outflows and deferred inflows, and those increase and decrease. So, the net effect, after this $18 million decrease in overall benefits, was a negative impact of $0.2 million to your net assets. So, this year, the bottom line, your pension effect to the net assets was quite minimal. The other pension item is your other benefits, and this is your health insurance, other post-employment benefits is your health insurance, and this one also fluctuates quite a bit. This year, your liability decreased by $21 million to $70 million, which is good. That means I have less that I plan to expand 10 years from now from the actuarials. On this one, our discount rate was increased. On this one, we had an interest rate, discount rate of, that was below 4%. We increased it up to 3.59, and that helped you, and that's what helped generate that $21 million. So, bottom line is, I'm going to just say, the net effect to the financial statements in this one was $1.2 million after all the dust settled. So, this year, both the pension plan and the other post-benefit plans had rather minimal effect to your financial statement and your net position. During the year, there were no audit adjustments. That's, to me, is wonderful news. That means the financial statements that you're receiving and making your decisions on, on a daily, weekly, quarterly basis are all clean. In the auditor's judgment, the college is following all the government accounting standards and principles on a monthly and annual basis, and you'll be reporting and have reported the financial statements to the government entities this past month. The audit opinion was a clean opinion in all respects. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We had no instances of non-compliance, and the Public Fund Investment Act was in compliance. That means you get a pat on the back for everything that they did. Jumping to the numbers, and we'll go through every number, but again, looking at overall, what did, how did we do? Well, I like a five-year summary, we're historians. What's the trend been for us? Well, as you can see, your total assets this past year, as you see, jumped from $564 million to $598 million. That's a $34 million, a 6% increase in this one-year period in your total assets. In the five-year period, you've jumped up 36%. You're basically a third bigger than you were just five years ago, and that's $160 million. Again, a lot of that came in as a result of COVID. On your liabilities, though, we've only had a modest 3% increase in this five-year period of about $11 million. So, bottom line is, when my assets go up by 160 in a five-year period and by liabilities by 11, I added basically close to $150 million in this five-year period to my net assets. And again, your net assets, the 268, basically represents the capital foundation of the organization. The college has that to work with going forward. How did we get there? Well, we got there by bringing in operating revenues and non-operating revenues, basically total revenues of $220 million. This year, that's a little bit less, about 6% less than last year, all due to the COVID money that I showed you a while ago, where the previous year, $55 million came in, and this year, $22. So, that's about a $13 million decrease. But if you look at five years ago, compare it to pre-COVID, our total revenues were $197. So, we're actually bringing in $23 million, 12% more than our pre-COVID year. So, we're back in revenues on COVID, and I'll go down after that. Total expenditures were about a 10% decrease this year compared to last year, $199 million in the previous year, $178 this year. So, a $21 million decrease, about a 10% decrease. But again, if you look at five years ago, we're actually spending less than we were in the pre-COVID years. So, our revenues are up over pre-COVID, and our expenditures are down over pre-COVID. Now, one of the major regions, as you can see, is that our full-time students' equivalents has also unfortunately dropped. We were at $17,604, and now, we're itching back up, fortunately, but we're at $14,27, slow increase over the previous year. So, COVID obviously affected all the universities, as we're well aware. But this, I jumped, overstepped there purposely. Our total net increase this year, you did add $41,672,000 to your net assets this year. Previous year, $34 million, all said and told, about $150 million, as I said before, to your total net assets. So, tremendous growth, I would argue, in this very short five-year period, and tremendous growth after the COVID period that we had. Again, we're trying to get back up to the pre-COVID full-time student equivalents. And then, the average revenue per full-time student is itching up also at $2,197 compared to $2,109. Slight increase, and very slight increase where we were at about $2,000 the year before. Jumping over to the next slide, just to see it visually, you can see where we were in 2019, and our total net position jumping all the way up in 2023. On the next slide is reflecting our total revenues by sources. Just again, I won't go through all this, but for budgetary purpose, this is always a good revenue source. But if you look down at the graph below, I think it's a good chart to see that for the last three years, we've been relatively consistent. But again, due to COVID, we're showing a little bit less revenue this year than we had in the past. And if you look specifically at the line of federal grants, non-operating, we're at $66 million, whereas the previous year, COVID had brought in a full $93 million, and then $82 million the year before. But yet, compare it to five years ago, we're above where we were pre-COVID when we had $53 million in total operating grant monies. So, taking COVID monies out of the picture, we're sitting 25% over where we were five years ago. Again, true growth, true growth. Where did we spend the money is on the next, this slide here. Again, keep in mind, COVID funds were in there. But just touching on it very briefly, your institution expenditures at $60 million this year compared to $60 million in the previous year, just a minor decrease there. Our academic support was up a little bit from the $22 million to $23 million. We're still not quite where we were at COVID. Again, we have fewer full-time equivalent students. All in all, our total operating expenses this year were at $173 compared to $193. So, that dropped about $20 million in operating expenses this year. And again, as I mentioned before, we're below our pre-COVID expenditures five years ago. That's your financial report. Hopefully, not too fast, but hopefully informative. Yes, sir?
Can you go back to Slide 13, please?
I'm on Slide 15, I think.
Yeah, Slide 13.
Oh, 13, I apologize. Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand why in four years we increased from a total net position of $270 million to $270 million. I guess I don't understand how we increased $200 million in four years. Did I, I missed that somewhere. Can you explain to me from this graph?
Okay, well, if I can take you back.
I mean, I guess it's from $120 to $270. So, we increased to $150 million in four years?
Yeah, well, let me go back to this graph if I can. Hopefully, this will answer it. If you, your total net position, again, we were at $119 million five years ago, and we've jumped all the way up to $268. And the way we jumped all the way up to $268 is by this line, we added, over the years, $12 million, $8 million, $63 million, $34 million, $41 million. I think, is that what you're asking?
And all of that is a result of, what, HERFs? Okay, so we got roughly, benefited roughly $120 million, $150 million from COVID funds?
We received, yes, sir, Ms. Uxer, we received $122 million from HERF resources from the federal government, of which approximately $55 million went straight to students. We were a pass-through for that. But the remainder of that went in as lost revenue, amongst other things.
So, $20 million, $70 million is that, and we added a net increase, then about $50 million?
Correct.
How did we do that? And let's do it again.
Well, you did get $30 million a couple of years ago, also as an unrestricted grant.
Okay.
Hopefully, this page will answer most of your issues there.
Anybody have any other questions? How many years have you been doing this?
How many years have we, have I been doing this? Quite a few. I think I've been with you all over 20 years.
Yeah, you look exactly the same as you did one year ago.
Oh, well, thank you.
I was wondering now.
Chair Haggerty, I want to thank Mr. Peña and Peña Briones McDaniel for the good work that they do with us, ensuring that we are, that all of our financials are in working order. I obviously want to thank Vice President Flores and all of the cabinet members who participate in this as well. Thank you, Ms. Peña.
Thank you all. It's both good work, it's tremendous statements.
Make sure we stay straight.
I will, sir. It's good to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Belle, 1.7.3?
Item 1.7.3, Dr. William Serrata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from a Paso Community College. There are none for this item, Mr. Haggerty. Item 1.7.4, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Greetings, folks. I want to introduce both from our mission campus, Pat Duran, Counseling, and Kim Diaz, Philosophy. They're going to be giving you a presentation on a program that is being supported by the Faculty Association and the Faculty Senate.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Burnham, for inviting us, and thank you, everybody. Right, so as we know, during the pandemic, many of our colleagues retired abruptly and ceremoniously. And this actually came out of the Mental Health Committee. We just saw how our colleagues didn't have the time to retire properly. And consequently, many people, as you know, we couldn't be together, we couldn't be connected, and the aspect of mental health is what drew us to this issue. Then, after that, we decided, let's do a survey. Let's survey our faculty to see if they would be interested in having some form of retirement community to support each other through the process. And Carrie is the one out of the Mental Health Committee. Carrie Van Houw designed the survey, and I'm just, we'd be happy to share this with you. Let me see, it was a total of 188 people responded, and 85% of them said that they would be interested in some form of support through retirement. Other numbers that I could tell you, about 40% said that they would be very likely interested in joining, which was 120 people, and 30 people said that they were not interested. So, overwhelmingly, the numbers said they would prefer to have guidance through the retirement process, workshops on relevant topics, a way to stay connected to the college, opportunities to connect social lives, and some of us are interested in retirement parties. So, we can share more, but that's, those are some of the numbers, the initial numbers.
So, then, we decided to create a subcommittee from the Mental Health Committee that was called the EPCC Retirement Association Planning Committee. And so, our first effort, as we showed you all, is we're going to have our first gathering next Friday, excuse me, from 12:00 to 2:00. We want to thank Mr. Peña for providing us listings of retirees, but the majority didn't have email addresses, and that's all we could have access to. So, we sent out 100 invitations of people that had email addresses that we could forward this invitation to. And we're looking forward to having a nice gathering tomorrow between 20 to 30 people to start the initiative. We also understand that Carrie Mo, Dr. Serrata, you are also having a little retirement planning stuff right before COVID, and then Carrie is going to be meeting with us after spring break, and we're going to collaborate together. Our intent is for all to be included, administrators, faculty, staff, professional tech, all to be included, that if you're retiring, that we can be connected together, that we can share, that we can mentor those that are going to begin to retire and thinking about retirement, and then also the retirees to guide us and to mentor us. And so, Carrie liked that a lot, and so, we're looking forward to meeting with Carrie.
Don't be looking at the cabinet members as they retire.
Yeah, so, we're looking forward to it, and we don't want to take too much of your time, but we're excited to present it, and we'll be working in collaboration with Carrie Mo and the president. And so, they have their initiative, we have ours. We want to be inclusive of all, and so, we're looking forward to our first little socialization tomorrow. Anyone that's interested, you're invited, tomorrow from 12:00 to 2:00 here at the AACMB 445. Come join us and have a little bit of nachos and so forth, okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Dr. B.
All right, 1.2, no one from the students? No? Nobody from professional staff?
No, sir. Section 1.8 Communications, Item 1.8.1, Discussion and Review Regarding Data, Statistics, Policies, and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Chair Haggerty and members of the Board, I have asked Dean Villalobos to present to the Board on the eight-week hybrid campus project. Dean Villalobos, we've heard of the eight-week format for quite some time from other, from much smaller colleges. And so, we determined that it was in our best interest to look at a campus. And early on, none of the campuses were inclined to take on an eight-week hybrid campus project. But Dean Villalobos and the mission campus stepped up, and they have implemented an eight-week hybrid campus. And so, I'd like Dean Villalobos to please review the data with the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Serrata, Board of Trustees members. It's my pleasure to give you a little background and an update in terms of where we stand right now at mission in our eight-week hybrid project. So, let me give a little bit of a background in terms of where and how we got here. So, in 2022, the Texas Success Center and the Trellis Foundation partnered to develop a cohort of community colleges that have already implemented a eight-week hybrid modality that is pretty much extensive throughout their entire, either, campus or system. And so, these three colleges were mentors to 14 community colleges in the state of Texas, and they were of Texas, and they were being mentored to implement the same project at their institution or campus. So we are fortunate enough to have our mentor be Odessa College, so with Odessa being our mentor, we had the opportunity to not only visit Odessa with faculty counselors and some staff, we also had the opportunity to do some data sharing and some curriculum sharing with them as well. So a little bit about this eight-week hybrid modality, eight weeks and hybrid courses are nothing new for El Paso Community College, but combining them together and at this scale is new for El Paso Community College. So a little bit about eight weeks, as we all know, a regular sixteen-week term is, can be broken up into two mini-masters of eight weeks. And so the benefits of this is that a student who takes a sixteen-week semester and takes four classes is full-time, but they also have to focus on four classes at a time during that sixteen-week semester. In the eight weeks, they're able to focus on just two classes, and so it's beneficial for them in terms of focusing their work for just two courses at a time during the eight weeks. The problems arise because during that eight weeks, you're compressing the amount of time that the students are meeting inside the class, so it's double the amount of time for them to be inside the classroom. For online eight weeks, you're asking the students to get that compressed information and learn it at a self-paced rate, which is also a challenge for many of our students. So what we wanted to do is bring this modality of eight-week course hybrids where the class times are still met face-to-face, so the students can still see their instructors, and they would meet for an hour and twenty minutes or an hour and fifteen minutes, just like they would in a sixteen-week semester. Now, the students would meet in this eight-week semester, Monday, Tuesdays, or Tuesdays, Thursdays, and the days they don't meet on campus, they actually do that additional work online, and that's where the hybrid modality comes in. One of the other things that's beneficial in this modality is that there are no classes on Friday. And so what this allows both faculty and students to do, faculty can have their office hours, or what we call at Mission our student support hours, students can come on campus to do tutoring, and they can also meet with their faculty members, and also faculty have an opportunity to do grading and meet with students. So a little bit about how we actually prepped for this, because this was a very heavy lift, so there are many, not only departments, but individuals that I would like to thank in this process. So in the summer of twenty-two, when it was decided that Mission would go ahead and be the campus to actually start this project, we began to develop the Fall '23 schedule in Fall '22, so we had a whole year to kind of prep for that. So we went ahead and completely built our schedule from ground up, which is something that we have never done before. So our mission schedule was wiped clean, and the faculty and the faculty coordinators built the schedules course by course. So a shout out to my coordinators and faculty for doing that extraordinary lift. So originally, our goal was to have ninety percent of all classes at Mission be in this eight-week format. Once the dust settled and all of the courses were set into the schedule, we, we had about sixty-four percent of our classes for fall that met the eight-week model modality. For this spring, which is our second semester doing this, we are at seventy-seven percent. Based on the data that we're looking at right now, it seems like the sweet spot for Mission is somewhere around seventy percent of all of our classes being eight-week hybrid modalities with no negative impact in terms of course cancellations. So in terms of preparation, we also did a very heavy marketing campaign starting in Spring '23, so shout out to Dr. Mo and her team for an amazing job that they did in terms of marketing this, not only to the region around Mission, but also throughout El Paso. We had billboards, we were doing social media, television interviews. Dr. Diaz did one of the interviews for Telemundo, and also for the amazing amount of swag, and some of you have the, the bags in front of you filled with some of the flyers that came out of our marketing department. So all of those were handed out to students to help promote the eight-week project. And the most important aspect of the campus preparation was the faculty input and buy-in. So prior to starting this, we did have several meetings and workshops. Thank you, Dr. Serrata and Dr. Smith, for showing up to, to several of these workshops to answer questions from faculty, as well as from counselors and students and the support areas at Mission to ensure that we started the eight-week project on the strongest footing as possible. So once all the ducks were in place, we went ahead and started the implementation of the eight-week hybrid courses. So what makes this very transformative in terms of course modality here at Mission is that we do have, like I said, eight-week courses face-to-face as well as online, but all of the courses that are hybrid at Mission eight weeks all have the same blackboard shell look to it. So a student taking a history class or a psychology class, the notes are the same location, the assignment same location, so there's less confusion for the student. So that's one thing. The other thing is that our courses are required to have what we are calling student success hours. Now, the student success hours can be any number of hours the faculty wants. It could be five, ten, twelve hours throughout the eight weeks. Those hours can be a student seeing a tutor, visiting the faculty during their student support hours, or participating in campus events. This was our way to ensure that our students knew where counselors were, that they had a rapport with their faculty member, and that they had a college-going culture of the various events that we have throughout the semester at Mission. To also help this kind of campus culture initiative, we also wanted to make sure that our faculty were well in tune with the things that are happening, not only at Mission, but throughout the institution. So we implemented what we call Faculty Fridays. Since no faculties were teaching, it was easy to get everybody together, share some food, and also do some training. So last fall, we did the following six sessions. We did blackboard training to ensure all faculty knew of all of the new bells and whistles blackboard has, and that was given by Lou Cadenet in Distance Education. We had pedagogical techniques to ensure that this, the faculty are using the best teaching methods for a hybrid course modality, and that was given by Janine Rudnick. We also had one on student support, in particular, early alert. Early alert is an extremely important component for us, because in such a short timeframe, we really need to make sure that we capture the students if they start to fall off track in terms of their coursework. And so Ms. Sandra Lujan gave us a great presentation on how to ensure that early alert is being utilized by all faculty members. We also did two presentations where faculty had a Q and A with me to make sure that things were going well, if we needed to pivot in some way, and how we would be moving forward. So we wrapped up our fall semester, and so I did want to share some of the quantitative data. There is a copious amount of data that we are collecting, not only from fall, but also currently in spring. Inside your bag, there is a very large report that was compiled by Irieth Aguirre. She is a math instructor at Mission. She has helped sending out the surveys and compiling the statistical analysis of this data. So for Fall '23, we saw a seventeen percent increase at Mission. That is in large part due to the Operation College Bound event, and a shout out to our counselors who helped promote this at the OCB events. We had one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight students at Mission enroll in the eight-week hybrid classes exclusively. The grade distributions so far were the, the most outstanding results. So for students who took both a Mini One and Mini Two in the hybrid format, there was an eighty-one percent success rate, so eighty-one percent of them got a C or better inside their class. Students who just took a Mini One course had an eighty-five percent success rate. Students who exclusively took a Mini Two had a seventy-seven percent. And just for comparison, students who took the average sixteen-week had a seventy-two percent success rate. So we saw some great numbers in terms of student success rate utilizing this modality. Some of the other data metrics that were impressive were the full-time versus part-time enrollment for our students. So we always want to make sure our students are enrolling full-time so they can complete their degree, their degrees as soon as possible. So out of that one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight students, forty-nine percent of them enrolled full-time, which overall is thirty-nine percent at EPCC, so that was a ten percent increase for students taking this modality. There was a ten percent drop in students enrolling part-time, so fifty-one percent enrolled part-time. So that was also a nice benefit in terms of this modality as well so far. Now for spring, we haven't wrapped up our first mini-master just yet, so first mini-master ends in the coming weeks, and so we had a twenty-three percent increase in enrollment at Mission. And out of the one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight students who enrolled exclusively in those eight-week hybrid courses at Mission, forty-four percent of them came back to enroll exclusively at the eight-week campus courses at Mission. Seventy-two percent came back in some form at EPCC, whether at Mission or at Viverde or a combination of eight-week, sixteen, online, or what have you. So we have large amounts of not only the quantitative, but we also have qualitative data. So these were done by surveys that were sent to both faculty and students. So some, I'm not going to go over all of it, it's, there's a lot inside that binder, but for faculty, some of the repetitive comments that we saw were students were staying on track better in the eight-week modality. It provides consistency for students by having the same blackboard shell inside their courses, and that they notice that these courses allow the flexibility for students whenever issues arise inside their personal life or work life. For the students, we also had a lot of positive comments. Workload was not as bad as I thought, which was a great comment that we consistently heard because we were a little worried about that, and also that they do like meeting in person, which is another thing that we really wanted to hear, because with so many students wanting to take online courses, we were glad that this modality allowed them to still have that flexibility of taking online courses, but still meeting with their faculty members. So moving forward, so this project is only going to go on for two years, and so over those two years, we are going to be collecting this data, and we are still going to be assessing everything from the student's success, faculty support, and their enrollment metrics. At the end of that, in Fall '25, we will look at all that data and see the viability of this either continuing at Mission, or maybe possibly using this as a modality for other locations as well. And last, I can say that this was, this was an absolutely huge effort, and this was done in part by several departments here. I know I am missing at least half a dozen here, but I just want to give a huge shout out to counseling, advising, the registrars, Dr. Lucchicca Chavez, Dr. Amaya and their area. Dr. Mitchell, her student support areas, Mr. Fernandez's IT, who helped provide additional computers for Mission for students enrolling in the eight-week. Distance learning, my absolutely amazing staff inside my office, and all of the Mission faculty who helped make this a success. Thank you.
Any questions? No question? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good job.
Section one point nine, Board of Trustees Business, item one point nine point one, Discussion and Take Action to Authorize the President or His Designee to Execute a Limited License Agreement Between the College and Rotary International District 5520 Regarding the Installation of Certain American Flags Displays on the Trans Mountain Campus.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
A question in this agreement, is this going to be a year-to-year, or is this an in perpetuity?
As long as they keep, as far as I know, Dr. Exer, they plan on doing it every year, and they do it four times a year. They do it on Veterans Day, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, and Fourth of July.
It's just that, I, I just don't like enacting something positively for, in perpetuity, you know, not having an end date. So as long as this is a year, annual thing, that's great.
And, and what I really like about it, too, is it's a fundraiser for, and out of the fundraising, they, they do, every year you give a donation to El Paso Community College, I believe around five thousand dollars, right?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item one point nine point two, Discussion and Action to Appoint the Members of the Executive Committee of the Student Success Endowment Fund as Recommended by the President of El Paso Community College.
Chair Hagerty and members of the board, the staff and I have been moving forward with the Mackenzie Scott Endowment in, in an effort to have everything ready to launch, at least a soft launch for this fall. And with that, my recommendation for the Endowment Committee is as follows. Mr. Fernie Flores would serve as chair, Dr. Carlos Amaya would be a representative from Student and Enrollment Services, Dr. Steve Smith, our Vice President of Instruction and Workforce Education, Dr. Carrie Mo, Ms. Anazuniga, Ms. Josette Shaughnessy, we don't let anyone retire, Judge, and Ms., and Ms. Inés Lopez is my recommendation to the board. I'm, I'm happy to respond to any questions. This is my recommendation for the Endowment Committee so that we can be, continue to move forward with the Mackenzie Scott gift.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item one point nine point three will be discussed after executive session. Section one point ten, Board Reports, item one point ten point one, Treasurers Report, no action is required. Item one point ten point two, President's Report. Item one point ten point two point one, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Chair Hagerty and members of the board would like to begin my report by announcing that the college was recently presented with the Achieving the Dreams Leah Meyer Austin Alumni Award during Achieving the Dreams twentieth Annual Conference in Orlando, Florida. EPCC was presented with a commemorative challenge coin, here you go, Judge, for being a previous Leah Meyer Austin Award recipient. The college was also recognized as a network legend for the college's longtime work with Achieving the Dream. It was a great honor to receive this award, and it is a testament to the great work the college continues to move forward with. The EPCC Nursing Program and Recruitment Office hosted approximately two hundred high school students and community members at an open house at the Rio Grande Campus. The participants learned about the college's nursing program and the path to a medical career. On February sixth, EPCC held the grand opening of the new multimedia studio at the Viverde Campus, featuring a podcast studio with audio and video capabilities, a light board and a video studio with a green screen. The studio located in the Technology Resource Center will be open to faculty and students. The multimedia studio will engage students and enable creativity and innovation while fostering student success. This project was made possible by a Title V grant for the Department of Education. We look forward to the project that will result from the new multimedia studio, and I believe we have a video.
Thank you for joining us today as we celebrate the grand opening and ribbon-cutting of our new multimedia studios at our Technology Resource Center.
What is incredibly important about these labs is that they were made possible because of the Accelerate at EPCC Title V Grant. The Title V Grant is vital for minority-serving institutions like EPCC.
The multimedia studios at the Technology Resource Center will transform learning and...
will transform learning at EPCC and we are so thrilled that our students and faculty are a part of it. The podcast studio will allow students to gain practical skills in audio production, interviewing, script writing and editing, which are valuable in various fields such as journalism, mass communication, media production, and other majors.
EPCC provides and makes it easier for us students to do better in school and do better academically. So I'm very thankful for this program. Thank you so much.
This is an innovative technology teaching tool that allows professors to present complex concepts and demonstrations in a clear and captivating way. This tool will improve student learning. Finally, the third studio that we're excited to present today is a video studio equipped with a green screen. This studio allows faculty to create engaging presentations and instructional videos with virtual backgrounds, animations, and special effects that facilitate the comprehension of complex topics. This will create an interactive and immersive learning experience by overlaying graphics, images, and videos into their lectures.
So certainly want to thank our team for moving forward with that. Certainly excited about the possibilities for our students. Continuing with my report, the EPCC Forensics Team took third place debate sweepstakes at the Speech on the Beach Tournament in Corpus Christi on the weekend of February 10. The team competed in the IPDA Debate, prose, dramatic interpretation of literature, and impromptu and informative speaking. The team included Gabriel Macías Mejía, Len Hernández, Victor Quintanilla, Esmeralda Soto, Cora Cutkamp, Gáñez Ortega, Giovanini Falvo, and Angela Tefor. In addition, the team won second place team sweepstakes in the two-year subdivision at Truckee Meadows Community College in Reno, Nevada. Congratulations and well done. Earlier this month, the Senior Adults Program and Director Ms. Mary Yáñez hosted the 27th Annual Seniors' Love Conference. The Seniors' Love Conference started in 1995 and is still going strong by providing seniors with the opportunity to meet new friends, stay connected with the community, and learn about resources to enrich their lives. The event includes dynamic speakers focusing on topics to raise spirits and maintain good health. The event hosted over 500 participants. Congratulations to Ms. Mary Yáñez and her team. The college honored Dana Inzegnega, sorry, and Athletics Department at the El Paso Baseball Loyalists by naming the Tejano's Home Field on his behalf. After 26 years of serving in the military, Dana was stationed in El Paso, went to the first-ever EPCC Tejano's baseball game, and never left. He started as a volunteer and then became a full-time staff member of the EPCC Athletics Department. He's also announced EPCC baseball games and softball games and successfully implemented GPA requirements on scholarship athletes. Dana has been involved in the citywide baseball scene as well. He's been on the El Paso Baseball Hall of Fame Board of Directors since 2001 and currently serves as the Secretary and Treasurer. And in 2012, he himself was inducted into the Hall of Fame. We look forward to watching our Tejano's play at the field now named in his honor. I was honored to provide welcoming remarks at the LULAC Legends and Reunion Event on February 24, where Mrs. Robles was recognized for serving as a national president and playing a significant role in making LULAC a viable organization. Ms. Robles was recognized along with six prior LULAC national presidents of the organization. Certainly we're thrilled, a lot of the folks that were here in this room to congratulate Ms. Robles as well as her predecessors. The Jenna Welsh and Laura Bush Community Library celebrated the Dr. Seuss National Read Across America Week. I and other members of the community had the opportunity to read to the students from Deanna Davenport Elementary School, which was one of six schools that participated in this event. Kudos to Ms. Laura Lee Ambrys and her team for hosting the Canatío School District. On February 2, Ms. Yasmin Ramirez, author of the book And La Preta, and Mr. Mariso Rodríguez Chicanix, the district-wide coordinator, helped launch Latino Literacy Nights. The initiative amplifies college awareness and career readiness for students and families of Socorro Middle School. Thank you both for representing EPCC in this worthwhile contribution to our community. The Language Institute also participated in Latino Literacy Nights this month. They provided children with door prizes, crayons, and coloring pages. The Language Institute's presentation yielded several questions and an affirmative discussion with parents in attendance. Other notable events the Language Institute participated in this month included the 27th Annual Seniors' Love Conference and EPCC's College Day presented by the Center for Students with Disability, which provided the opportunity for high school students with disabilities to learn about what EPCC has to offer. Thank you Language Institute staff for your continued engagement with various demographics of El Paso and of course, all you do for the college's students. The Northwest Library hosted the Campus Voter Registration Day on January 31, in conjunction with the district-wide government disciplines. Northwest Campus Librarians Rachel Murphy and Blake Kilisamara served as the volunteer deputy registrants with 70 people in attendance. Librarians registered 15 El Paso County residents to vote. They also conducted an impromptu three-question survey and 37 Northwest early college high school students participated. The library will hold voter registration events throughout the year to create awareness of the importance of voting. Thank you to our librarians and government disciplines for your efforts and time to promote voter outreach and resources. The EPCC Risk Management Institute received a $100,000 grant from the Texas Mutual Insurance Company to train the area's workforce in safety. Congratulations to AVP Primazic and the Risk Management Institute. The college accepted the Bellwether 2024 Legacy Finalist Award at the 2024 Community College Futures Assembly in San Antonio earlier this week. The award is for the Bridges Program that started in 1993 as a dynamic partnership between EPCC and UTEP to effectively train research-oriented students who bridge from community college to university to complete baccalaureate degrees in biomedical fields. Congratulations to Dr. Smith and his team for the recognition. Chair Hagerty, that concludes my report and I'm happy to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Doctor.
Section 1.11, Consent Docket, this includes item 3.2.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Section 2, Administration. Item 2.1, Tasby Local Board Policies, BBD, BBI, CU, and DEC for Second Reading and Approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Section 3, Personnel. Item 3.1, Discussion and Action to Approve Full-Time Staff and Faculty Recruited in Positions Funded by the Institutional Budget.
Move to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Item 3.2 was included in the consent docket. Item 3.3, Information Items, Resignations and Retirements, No Action Is Required. Section 4, Financial Services, There Are None. Section 5, Physical Facilities, There Are None. Section 6, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 6.1, Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, THECB, Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education True Grant in the Amount of $147,204.
Move to approve? Second.
Any discussion? What is the true grant?
Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Chairman Hagerty, members of the board. The true stands for Texas Reskilling/Upskilling Through Education Grant. This is actually the second true grant that we've received from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And it's designed for obviously reskilling workers in various fields. In this case, we're focusing on IT and health occupations. And so those are the students that'll benefit from this particular go-around.
Sounds great. Whoever got it for us, thank you.
We have a couple of people here. Dr. Soraya Hajar is in the room. I don't know if Tony Ayub is in the room as well. And of course, we always want to thank our Grants Office under the leadership of Mr. Robert Elliott.
Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. 6.2.
I'm going to call the question. Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Item 6.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval of an Emergency Medical Services Agreement with the Isleta Independent School District, YISD, to Teach Emergency Medical Services Program, EMSP, Courses to YISD Students in the Amount of $58,656.
Move to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Section 7, Student Services. Item 7.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Add Course Fees for Nursing Kits and Exam Review Courses.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Item 7.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Increase the Vehicle Registration Fees Effective the Fall 2024 Semester.
Move to approve 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4.
Go ahead and read 7.3 and 7.4.
7.3, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for New Courses. Item 7.4, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for Revised Courses.
Any discussion on 7.3 and 7.4?
How about 7.2?
Yes, exactly what?
7.2? Question?
Yep.
What do we use that money for? I mean, it doesn't cost a whole lot to register a vehicle and it probably doesn't change a lot over the year-to-year. So what do we use the money for?
Excuse me, that's a great question, Mr. Exer.
I wouldn't ask it if it was.
Right. So the Police Department of Vehicle Registration uses it for multiple reasons. First of all, safety and security of our parking areas and the campuses. But it provides, we do an annual fund transfer to physical plant for maintenance of the parking lots. It also pays for staffing, vehicle purchases, and maintenance.
So we use it to subsidize other activities and just lump it under this as vehicle registration?
We try to make sure that what we're using it for is for the activities related to the Police Department, protecting the safety of, you know, the parking lots, the facilities, getting from one campus to the other. So it's a different pot of money and it funds different positions than the rest of the Police Department. They're separate budgets.
I have a question.
I think we need a second before we move forward with further discussion, Dr. Graham. Ms. Robles motioned, but we have not had a second.
I second.
Mr. Exer, thank you. Please, Dr. Graham.
My question is, it still seems like it's a fungible pot of money.
So my question is, why did we go from 40 to 70? That's a steep increase instead of 40 to 45 or 50, and then on the other side, 30 to 50. It is for staff and I'm sure that the staff can afford it, but let's look at the student side. Why, I mean, how long ago was it that we increased it? Because we should be doing this maybe yearly instead of hitting everybody with such a steep increase.
Right. We hadn't increased the rate since 2018. That was the last increase, so six years. And so the faculty and staff parking rates, annual rates, will go to $70 a year. The students would be $60 a year, both increasing from $40. And we have seen a significant decrease in revenue because of the change in the student bodies since COVID. So this is a self-sustaining, self-supporting budget. And in order to maintain the parking lots, continue to purchase vehicles, provide staffing, safety and security of the campuses, we are increasing to keep up with those challenges. We understand we've been sensitive to the changes and we know if you figure it out over the past six years, that would have been equivalent to a $5 a year increase.
Well, yeah, but it wouldn't be as hard to pay that. You know, keep in mind that
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of students that are hurting financially and we're trying to keep them in school. And it's not their fault that we didn't increase it every year.
The good part about this is that the parking fee for the students receiving Pell will still be eligible to be covered by their financial aid.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Section 8, Community Services, There Are None. Would the board like to go into executive session?
Yes, please.
The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to chapters, to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item 1.3.1, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding the Proposed Contract Termination of Employee in the Division of Information Technology pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Item 1.3.2, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding the Need to Hire a Law Firm to Represent the College in the Event of Conflicts of Interest Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 5:38.
All right, the board is back into regular session out of executive session. And we have to discuss
Item 1.9.3. Item 1.9.3, Discussion and Action to Hire Einsa Hudson-Hester and Cruz, LLP, to Provide Professional Legal Services to the College as Needed Only for Conflict of Interest with the College's Current Law Firm.
Motion to approve as recommended by legal counsel during executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Ms. Nahida?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
And I'd like to let everyone know that our next board meeting will be March the 28th, right here in this same building, at 4:30. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So may they.
Okay, any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.